...in the meeting.
We did.
You have been put on hold by the House. You do not listen or talk until the House releases the hold.
Yep.
Ten bucks, that's more than right.
No, that's the mayor and me right now. Still waiting on Rhonda.
Keep going. Sorry, we can't get justice. It's gonna be a lot harder when I'm on the track.
Okay. Okay, good. Live stream is going, so everybody knows. Oh, she's done it. The phone's for Rhonda.
She was two percent of Jersey.
Can I have the phone connected to Zoom already? Just a second. The live stream is going.
What's on hold?
I just added another end. Can you check and see your prompt from the line?
Rhonda, are you able to hear us?
Good evening, Your Honor. I'm on the phone and here you well.
Excellent, thank you. Rhonda, if you could let him use your phone when you're not speaking, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, I will go ahead and get started. The Wednesday, July 8, 2020 special meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:30 PM. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Am I doing roll call this evening?
Yeah, she's waiting.
Oh, City Clerk's in the back. I couldn't see her. City Clerk, roll call, please. Thank you. Yeah, let's put our microphones on, please. Sorry, go ahead, City Clerk.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mr. Townell?
Here.
Here, thank you. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I think the agenda is written.
Thank you. Wait a second. Commissioner Schlegel?
Second motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. If yes, all opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. We have no announcements this evening. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when making public comments. Also, please note commissioners cannot immediately respond to public comment. Our intent to do so is at the end of the meeting during Commissioner comments. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
We only have a few written comments.
Okay. Okay, no one on the line. We have a few written comments. City Clerk, if you could read the written comments that we do have, please.
Thank you. This is from Margaret Bronsborough, 4 East Magnetic Street. After experiencing the strangest Fourth of July holiday in recent history, I'm writing to request that there be a report from the police about the number of people ticketed for fireworks violations under the new law over the holiday. I am particularly concerned about the picture on Facebook showing a trash can on the island full of the packaging that fireworks come in. Were the people shooting off fireworks on the island? I am also requesting a report about the overtime costs for city employees doing their massive cleanup of the beach at McCarthy's Cove. This report has to be shared due to the upcoming decreases in city services that are in the planning stage right now due to the effects of the pandemic on city finances. I am also requesting a report about the situation involving young people driving on Front Street on Saturday evening, throwing lit firecrackers out of a car and trying to hit people as they drove by. Have charges of assault with deadly weapon been filed against the people in that vehicle? Included comments from Facebook. You don't have to read the comments. Second comments are from Robert and Carolyn Whalen at 725 Pine Street. We write in regard to the need for public sewer access on the west side of 700 block of Pine Street in Marquette. It is urgent that the city of Marquette install a line at this location. Together with neighbors to the immediate north and south, we share a single line that passes into the neighbor's house to the north and ties into the city line on Prospect Avenue. Earlier this spring, our neighbor to the north indicated that he was having major structural collapsed issues due to a void beneath his basement created by the water flow. The source of the water and chief cause of the void appears perhaps to have been a flow of brown water into an open drain in his basement. Upon excavating the floor beneath the south wall adjacent to our house, he discovered a void beneath the shared sewer line mentioned above, and that line had collapsed. The neighbor has taken legal action against us, still unresolved. His communications have included a threat to cap our shared sewer line at the point it enters his property and a demand that we reroute our line around his house and tap into the same city line on Prospect, to which the shared line is currently attached. We have had extensive contact with the city of Marquette, including both your office and the Department of Public Works. We have been told by at least one city official that a new line along Pine Street is the obvious solution, and that given the context described above, installing a new line at that location should be one of the city's top priorities as it seeks to fulfill its state mandated obligations regarding sewers. While we are obviously displeased with our neighbor seeking to hold us in some way liable for this problem, we also understand his frustration. One thing we definitely agree on, that the city of Marquette has neglected its responsibility for decades with respect to the public sewer access. You've known about such problems for a long time, yet you failed to deal with them in a timely manner that would have liberated the issue with which we are not dealing. In addition to being concerned about the possibility of litigation from our neighbor's house to the north, we are deeply worried that a portion of shared sewer line running under our house might be subject to collapse in a manner similar to the one experienced by him. We therefore strongly urge the city to prioritize installation of a public sewer line on the 700 block of Pine Street and to arrange with our neighbor to the south to reroute their sewer line to tap into the new city line on Pine Street. We also expect the city to install and attach a line to our home sewer outlet at the point it currently taps into the clay line beneath the swell separating our home from the neighbors to the north and to run that new line out to the city line on Pine Street. We are vaguely familiar with the city's legal obligations regarding its citizens' private sewer lines. We maintain, however, that this problem would never have arisen had the city not neglected in the first instance to provide access to a public sewer. Given this historic negligence, we think it's unreasonable to ask that the city take responsibility for all related expenses to ensure in any event that we are not unduly burdened in rectifying this problem.
Thank you, City Clerk. Look at Albert and Ron. Yes. This evening, thank you very much. No one else is on the line? Just one, and we're recording. Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Next up, we have the consent agenda.
Commissioner, do we have a motion?
Commissioner Davis?
I move that we approve the minutes of the June 29, 2020 regular commission meeting. Oh, I should have the minute on. Do you want me to do it again?
Typically, we just approve the consent agenda, but I think there's only one item, so I don't know if that will matter. Okay. Making sure that...
Yes.
Okay.
So I move to approve the minutes of the June 29, 2020 regular commission meeting.
All right, do the second. Commissioner Bonzel?
I would second that, but can I also make a motion to amend the minutes slightly?
Oh. Well, you are certainly welcome to make a motion.
Okay.
What is the amendment?
So I would move that the sentence in the minutes, which currently reads, Commissioner Bonzel said he wanted to clarify, quote, "Commissioner Bonzel said he wanted to clarify his earlier comment. He said emails and Facebook messages quoted lifelike, saying they planned on approval by the commission for their festival," end quote. I would amend that to instead read, quote, "Commissioner Bonzel said he wanted to clarify his earlier comment. He said Facebook messages, not emails, had quoted lifelike as saying that they had already received approval by the commission for their festival," end quote.
Do we have a second on that motion? Member Townell?
Second.
All in favor of the secondary motion, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Do we have, and then you did second with an amendment, so all in favor of the original motion, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Both motions pass seven zero. Thank you. Moves us on to new business item number two, application for waiver and plan for the MERS-defined benefit pension plan. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor, background. Based upon the city's filing of Form 5572 pursuant to PA 202 of 2017, the state has ruled that our MERS-defined benefit pension plan is underfunded. In accordance with the act, the city may apply for a waiver of underfunded status for each system, pension, or retiree health insurance within 45 days from the date we receive notification of the unfunded status, May 28, 2020. The steps the city has already taken to address the funding status are documented in the attached waiver application. In addition to the application itself, the city must receive city commission approval to submit the waiver application. If the waiver application is approved by the state, the city will not have to file a corrective action plan with the Municipal Stability Board. The city's application for waiver is attached. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation, approve the attached application for waiver for the MERS-defined benefit pension plan and offer as city manager to sign and return the application. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse? Lower left bit.
Without having a sheet here, I guess what I'm motioning is to accept the recommendations as written by the city.
Okay, do you have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, then, Mayor. I have one question about this. So in this waiver, I haven't read through the waiver, we commit to our MERS-defined benefit pension plan being fully 100% funded by 2038. We also commit to it being only 60% funded by 2025, which is, my understanding is that's about where we're at right now, slightly below that. So my question would be, what is the plan to get from 60% funded in five years' time to 100% funded 13 years after that?
Right now, those are just estimates provided by MERS. MERS has this on a 19-year amortization schedule to take care of the underfunded status. It's very fluid. It's kind of a moving target. So in 19 years, we may be more than 100% or we may not be there, but according to current MERS projections, in 10 years, we should be 80% funded, and then in 19 years, 100% funded. But like I said, there's a lot that goes into it, like investment returns, which is the biggest factor for us. And so if people continue to eat the special retirement cakes they give everybody, then we should be okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item number three, 2020 slash 21 capital outlay budget discussion. Commissioners, can we please have a motion to suspend the rules for discussion? Commissioner Schlegel?
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can have discussion?
And the second, Senator Townell?
Second motion.
Thank you. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. So now we are in more of a relaxed discussion mode to talk about the tour that we just had, the bus tour, the capital outlay budget. We went and looked at the roads and some of the infrastructure around town. Very nice tour by Dennis Takowitz and Mike Pilbola. Thank you very much for the nice tour. And there you are, I'm back. See you now. So it looks like Gary's gonna take it from here, so we'll get more of the financial side probably coming at us. Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, so as you mentioned, you went on the tour earlier, and Dennis, make sure you visited all the nice, lovely roads that we had specially installed, just for tonight. These are projects, keep in mind, for next year. The projects that are currently going on were approved in, you know, part of the current year budget. These are for the FY '21 budget, which you haven't seen the entire budget yet, so it's a little bit putting the cart before the horse, but we want to let you know these are the projects that we plan on putting into the budget going in. Now, you'll have several opportunities to look at these projects, and if, you know, you get four votes, you can certainly amend the plan as we presented, but this is what staff is recommending, so we have tonight where we're just presenting it, telling you this is what we plan on putting in the budget. Then you'll have the budget hearings in mid to late August, and then you'll have the public hearing and approval of the budget in September. And then each one of these projects will come before you again for approval after we go through the RFP process. So you'll have ample opportunity to give, you know, further input, or if you want to make changes, you'll have other opportunity. So I'm gonna try to keep my part brief. I believe Dennis explained the process to you, but if you want me to go over that a little bit, I can. But it's the same process we've been using for, I don't know, like, three or four years now, and it seems to be working very well for us. So the projects that we're proposing, and these are in priority order, there's 24 that made the cut. We have a total of $13.6 million. Now, of that 13.6, we're saying we'll have to bond for five, roughly five and a half million. Now, part of that 13.6, it is... Item number, unique ID 40, which is priority 17. That's a solid handling storage facility. We plan, we'll have to finance that if it's approved, but we plan on doing that through the state revolving loan fund, which the state gives us more favorable terms if we get it, if we win out on our own. And this will be considered a revenue bond, so we really don't count that towards our bonding limit. So that's the reason, that's not part of the 5.5 million that we're recommending. But, you know, just kind of going down the list, we start out with 100 block, West Washington street scape, sidewalk repair, which we do annually. Pine Street, deconstruction, Prescott Hewitt, kids' code playground, curbing repair, which is in the stormwater. And then utility network switches. We have a SIMP program. People often ask what SIMP is. That's the Street Improvement and Maintenance Program. And that's where we probably get our biggest bang for the buck through the SIMP program, where it's not doing a complete reconstruction. We're also asking to fund Lake Street pump station repair. Then we get more into the streets, Front Street, Hewitt Avenue, College, Sharris Drive, Newbury Street. Now, these will be funded through a normal bond, and when we talk about a street reconstruction project, we aren't talking about just repaving the street. We're also talking about replacing the infrastructure underneath the street, and that's where it gets more costly. That's where we're replacing the water and the sewer, and, you know, if we have to install sidewalks, we do that at that time as well. So that's why those tend to be more expensive and why we have to issue bonds for those. Then we have, going down the list, data computer system replacement, water treatment plant, shingle roof replacement. Then we kind of get some of these motor pool. Motor pool has its own funding source. Now, the way the motor pool works, it's internal service fund for the city. So each department that uses vehicles pays money to the motor pool, and we don't, we try not to have to issue debt for these vehicles. We try to do it as pay-as-you-go. But any cuts we can make in the motor pool, you know, help save money throughout this entire city budget, so just kind of keep that in mind. And right now, what we're presenting for the motor pool budget is just what it's recommending, we're recommending. Now, once we get closer to finalizing the budget, we'll probably have to, you know, we usually end up making some cuts here and there, but right now, this is what we are recommending. But three police vehicles, like I mentioned earlier, the solid handling storage facility, and then a couple of tourist park items, North Access Road, and then parking and road improvements. And then we have some more vehicles, and then finally, the replacement of the retaining wall at the cemetery. We also have each department head here that submitted these items, so if you have specific questions, please feel free to ask. But we also show in this document the funding source for each project, like which fund is responsible, like general fund, street fund, sanitary sewer water, and so on. And so that's really the nuts and bolts of it. Like I said, we're coming at it, just 13.5 million dollars, of which about 5.5 million would require funding through a capital improvement bond. That's all I had. I don't know if you have any specific questions, or if you want to discuss it amongst yourselves.
Commissioners, do we have questions for Gary? Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, just a quick clarification on the computer system replacement. I know because of all the online work that we've had to do with COVID, that we've had a lot of our technology maxed out because we didn't anticipate how we can do the storage and things along those lines. Is this in line with what we have the special funds allocated towards several, a couple months back? Is this in line with that, for your complete replacement?
Are the traffic controls projects...
No, when we had, shortly after we started doing all of these Zoom meetings, we were running out of storage, and we had to go out and make a sizable investment in more computer... You got that one?
Mark can just... No, this doesn't have anything to do with that. This is strictly for the wastewater plant, the water treatment plant, and then our distribution systems.
Okay, thank you. I was associating that with a completely different program, so I'm sorry.
Senator Townell?
So I actually, I'm not sure what the solids, the solids handling thing is.
Mark?
Yeah. Is that, yeah.
When Kurt had done a presentation a month and a half ago or so, asking for us to apply for this funding, that is the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant for just handling the solids, trying to create more biogas, taking subjects, so that's what that program is.
And so there is a grant between...
Where we are right now with that program is, we're waiting for the list to come up and see where we are, and see if we're eligible for the funding, what, and if any long forgiveness we might get out of it, and then at that point, we're gonna come back with a commission and ask for approval from authority.
And that was gonna be, sorry.
That's all right.
It would be primarily funded through those programs. We wouldn't have any...
That funding would come strictly from the wastewater treatment plant, so the townships would pay a share of it.
In the city, though, it's sort of, we'd pay a portion of it, and the two townships, based on ownership percentage. And just to add, we're trying to fund this through a state revolving loan program, which it would be a loan. It's considered a revenue bond, but the overall goal is to try to make it, to make it revenue neutral, that... And maybe Mark can speak a little more about this, because I think he did the revenue projections, but we would charge for this service, and the whole is that we could at least recover the debt service costs for municipalities through this program.
Does this change in the sewer code that we just approved impact any of the priorities or any of the ways that we're spending money? Was that policy...
No, that won't have anything to do with that.
Yeah, okay. And then finally, I guess I will ask the question about climate change and sewer improvements. And are we building to a 100-year storm event, or are we considering, how might we include concentrations of bigger storms, more intense rains coming in these sewer improvement products?
I can't speak, it's on the collection system, but as far as the wastewater treatment plant goes, when we upgrade it, that was addressed during the last upgrade, 2008.
Thank you. Then, my, now the numbers that are under here, I just want to... So these are the things that aren't happening.
Correct.
That you sometimes talked about dragons and swans and things. Yes, thank you. Dragon, yeah, Game of Thrones, I don't know. And so in the context of what looks, now, just to be clear again about numbers and money, I'm just, this is money that is coming out of dedicated funds. It's not coming out of the general fund. It's not money that, as we think about the potential of having less money going forward due to coronavirus, these are budgets that we already, we have the money, or the money's gonna be in a process of loans... going to be in a process of loans, where we pay off the loan before we take the next one, so that these big projects can get done, we can take care of important infrastructure, and not let things deteriorate. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate, but we will keep an eye on, you know, how COVID-19 impacts everything, because, you know, if it gets pretty dire, then we probably aren't going to want to issue as much in debt as we're currently planning. And some of these projects are tied into grants, so if we don't get the grant, we won't do the project. But what you said is accurate, it's just that COVID-19 is on a little bit of a curve, and we will keep an eye out, and, you know, we'll certainly let everybody know if that does happen. But these projects here at the bottom, these are ones that either didn't make the cut, or the department had, or the person submitting requested that it be removed and be looked at in a different year, kind of a thing. So that's, you know, kind of really the story there. It's things that we hope to get to someday, but as you see, the list is starting to grow quite a bit, and you can only do so much, you know, when you're trying to do five and a half million dollars worth of bonding, say you have fifteen to twenty million dollars of projects submitted that would require bonding. So we're still trying to be very fiscally responsible and, you know, not trying to drive the city into the ground.
Last question, the improvement of the playground facilities at Matson Park. Is that, we were going to reapply, is there, I don't, I didn't see that. I don't know if that's even considered a capital project, so it just may be, that's the only other thing I was.
Here, you can't quite see it, but on the sheet, I think it shows a three hundred thousand dollar grant, on paper sheet.
Oh, is that Kids Cove? Is that what that is?
Yeah, so that's Kids Cove. We reapplied for that grant, and the city commissioner approved that grant application, so that's in the hopper, and DNR is working on it, so we'll see how that comes out.
So we don't, when will we find out about it?
We typically find out, it's between a Christmas present and a New Year's present, so that's typically when we, when we get back. And then we get a grant agreement, if it's successful, usually by May.
Yeah, I was looking for Matson, and I think it's Kids Cove, so.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I'm just going to follow up on Commissioner Bill's comment, so we need one second. Actually, among all the streets and sewers and computers and all that stuff, it's really nice to see a project like the Kids Cove and that playground getting an opportunity to improve some of the recreational facilities. You mentioned that the grant is three hundred thousand, and then there's another three hundred thousand that is in others. So could you talk to us about where that's coming from, and what, to what degree you have confidence that that's coming? Because I love the fact that it's not coming out of our budget.
Yeah, so that's something we've been doing for a number of years, is working with sort of special interest groups. So this particular group would be the Marquette Playgrounds For All Group. So they're committed to helping to drive accessible playgrounds, so any projects that are put in, in hopes that any new projects would be accessible to all. And there's some expenses and some unique equipment that goes along with that. So they've committed to raising the other three hundred thousand dollars through a fundraising campaign. They have a fairly large group with specialized people within the community that have both fundraising and expertise in universal design, so it's a, it's a pretty good group of folks and they're committed to raising that whole match.
So your level of confidence is pretty high. If we get that Christmas present of the grant.
Yeah, I think, I think if you get the grant, I think the group is going to be able to do a pretty good job on that.
Other Commissioners, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yeah, Mr. Simpson, just to reaffirm, the five point five billion that we're using in what we're bonding, that is the bond limit that we have based on what we're paying off this coming year, right?
Yes, sir, and that is a very good question, Kev. So what, how we try to handle this situation is, we try not to issue more debt than what we pay off in a single year. So we're projecting right around five and a half million will be that number.
Thank you, Joel.
Other Commissioners, Commissioner Frisher?
I think it's great, yeah, all that stuff. I'm pretty interested in the playgrounds all through, because I remember that was when I was on the board, a great idea we had, and a lot of ten coming, probably a ten year project, but it'd be great when it's done. And all the people we were, people I know were hesitant about going on McCarrick's Cove, but then must realize that McCarrick's Cove is falling apart and can't fix anything other because it's been built for so long, so it was a good idea, so that'd be great to get it done, so hopefully get the grant, get it done.
The Commissioner, Commissioner Matson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to say, I'm also very excited about the Kids Cove Park project, and I'm really hopeful that we'll be able to get a grant for that. I remember discussing that two, three years ago, when I was still on Parks and Land Board, working alongside John, so in that capacity, so that's really exciting. I'm sure our fingers would all be crossed. I just had a couple of questions specifically about street projects. So I understand that, and I understand if we don't have an answer for this right away, but I understand that we're redoing Hewitt in fiscal '21 from Pine to Spruce, which we've recently redone Hewitt East to Spruce. The water mains and sewers along Hewitt to the west of Pine Street, really all the way up to about Ford Street, are pretty much all a hundred, over a hundred years old, according to the information we've provided. The entire stretch is a three out of ten phaser rating, so pretty poor road condition. And I guess I would just say that I'm curious if we're planning on continuing the effort, essentially, with those improvements to Hewitt over the next few years. And I guess we don't have specific plans to do that, I would encourage us to breathe on.
Forgive me, that thing keeps getting caught in my hearing aid. It's driving me nuts. To partially answer your question, yes, of course, we plan on progressing with that street over time. To answer it with a one hundred percent absolute, I would need to defer to the Capital Improvements Plan, which I do not have a copy of with here, but that is our six-year plan that goes out, and we can most certainly get an answer to the city manager, and he can share that with the group tomorrow for a definite date on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, it'd be very helpful. And I guess, I apologize, but this might be one for you as well. So my other question, I think when we were on the bus today doing our tour of the roads in Marquette that are getting fixed, I think that as soon as anybody, somebody mentioned Division Street, everybody on this commission said, oh, yes, we get so many complaints from residents about the condition of Division Street, and according to the information we have here, large sections of it are in pretty poor condition, they've got aging clutter infrastructure. I understand that in fiscal '22, so in two years, we're planning on redoing Division north, from Julia North to Hampton. And I'm just curious if there's a particular reason why we're not doing it this coming fiscal year and waiting until the next year? I'm just concerned about the condition of the road after another winter.
Yeah, the, the reason it projected out to next fiscal year, obviously, is because there are other projects that were ranked higher before that. And in addition, some of the projects that we have in the Capital Improvements Plan this year are actually carryovers from a previous year. So as you remove them or insert projects, we're kind of playing catch-up. But you are correct in stating that it is per the plan, hopefully will be funded for summer of 2022.
Great, great, thank you, I appreciate that, that's all, that's all, yeah.
Other Commissioners, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a general comment for the engineers and I think the commission too, as we look at how we look at things beyond this coming construction season. When you look at the report on the phasers, phasers, when you look at the phasing report and the condition of roads, the one area of town that just is a gleaming sore is Sharris Hills. And while I realize the infrastructure there might not warrant a road reconstruction, certainly we need to be able to do something with the surface of those roads, bring those to a drivable standard. And I don't know we need to do it all at once, but I think that as we look at the projects out years, we need to have that considered very seriously as more alternatives we can do for those residents. Because I challenge that, with the exception of those streets that were recently redone, there's not one up there that is guaranteed to knock the fillings out of your teeth. We need to do a better job of that. I have those solutions, Your Honor, other than we need to really take a fight against it. Thank you.
I think that we, oh, Commissioner Davis?
Just real quick, I'd just like to echo Commissioner Stonehouse's comments about the streets in Sharris Hills, and you mentioned the crushing shape and how many years that might help us get through some of the more difficult periods and get them at least fixable to some degree. And that's a lot of the requests I have heard from residents in that area, and I would strongly support looking at that one closely.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Frisher?
I agree with Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Stonehouse, it's just to look, if you look at, you know, long-term handling, zig and drag and thing, see, you know, maybe even not replace the whole thing like Mr. Stonehouse said, but place maybe the major roads that come in off the highway, be a good idea. I know Marquette Drive is getting fixed, I lived there for twenty years, and it's finally getting fixed, it's been, it's good to see it happen, and I think it'd be good for the, a lot of people live in South Marquette, it's a popular area, so it'd be good to help them out, so a lot of overhauls in there, something good to get done.
Thank you. I have to say, I liked hearing some new creative solutions, so thank you to the engineering department and to community development for talking with us about some options for that area, and it sounds like the commission is interested to hear what that might look like. And I think you said that there may be some options, but we wanted to look at pricing, so I think if you want to put that together and get it to us, we'd be interested to see what that looks like. It was really great to drive around and then actually see the streets that we are looking to repair for the fiscal year '21, so this would be for next summer. The one thing I'm most excited about is that Kids Cove Matson Park Playground, I've been asking for this since I got on the commission as a mother of young children. It's far overdue, it's lazy to get splinters there, it's the most popular park in Marquette. We need an accessible playground for, for people with disabilities, and frankly, for young, young children, toddlers and young kids to be able to play on without the danger of kind of getting hurt. So very excited about that, and I'll be honest, if it doesn't get grant funded, I would be willing to consider keeping it on. I may not have commission support for that, but that would be a top priority for me anyway. Any other comments or questions, Commissioners, on this discussion? Thank you, Gary, thank you, Dennis, thank you, Mac, thank you, Mark. Melissa, I think that was it for today. John, who signed behind the heel box, thank you, John. And the rest of the city staff for helping put this together. I think we'll see it again here in a couple of months for the August budget meetings. All right, so that brings us to our second public comment of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. Do we have anyone calling in for a public comment this evening?
Nobody, no, there is one written comment.
There's one written comment for this session. Okay, City Clerk, if you please read the written comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is from Margaret Brown, 404 East Magnetic. I've been asked if I'm against tourists, here's my response. The response to comments I made about the conduct of the tourists over the Fourth of July weekend. I was asked, do you want to drive away tourists? Here's my response. We welcome tourists, practice social distancing, wear masks, and follow local ordinance about no alcohol, alcohol or tobacco on the beach, so setting on fireworks in local parks, and yes, fireworks are set off at the island, the most beloved and valuable venerable park we have. No throwing lit fireworks at people and property as you speed all over the city just because it's fun to do. And do not let your dog walk on the island because local ordinance forbids it. We, the residents of Marquette, are tired of our city workers and volunteers having to clean up after people who are being terribly rude. I personally am tired of tourists just being plain nasty to our local food service workers and then dumping garbage wherever they feel like it, and making messes all over the people and places we hold most important in this town. Yes, I'll take tourists. Tourists who follow our rules and don't defecate on us and then expect us to say, thank you, sir, may I have another?
Anyone else for a public comment? No one calling in, correct? Okay, brings us to comments from the commission. Commissioner Stonehouse, please start us off. Oh, can I back that up? I had one thing I wanted to do before that. So I know a lot of Commissioners are going to want to talk about the Fourth of July party at McCarty's Cove. Certainly welcome Commissioners to talk about whatever they wish during Commissioner comment, but I know it's coming. So I was hoping that before we get into that, that the city manager could just give us kind of a rundown of events from the city staff perspective.
Sure, I'll be happy to give it a try. Well, the Fourth of July weekend is historically a busy weekend for us, tourist-wise, beach-wise, a normal year's parade and everything else goes along with it. This year, the police department was fully prepared with extra staff to deal with the additional burdens of that particular event. There was concentration on fireworks complaints, and there were at least two dozen of those over the weekend, along with parties and normal calls of persuaders that we received. Now with, before I go out, just answer the, one of Margaret Brown's questions, and that was that people in that vehicle that she referred to, and her first comments were located and ticketed by the police department, so that complaint was handled. There was no felony assault complaint, it was a fireworks resolution, correctly.
Correct, and MIPs.
And minor possessions, so it was handled appropriately at the level that it needed to be handled. With regard to the beach, first of all, we have not ever closed our beaches this year related to the COVID situation. As a matter of fact, it's the one area of our park system that we have not closed. There's been kind of a roller coaster ride, if you will, with parks and openings and availabilities and access for the public. We've tried to do our best to match the desires of the community with the executive orders that have come out from the governor, and the most recent executive order was stage five or phase five, which allowed for a certain gathering of groups of people. Now, from our perspective, the McCarty's Cove incident was a small section or microcosm of everything that was going on that day. The beaches were moderately busy, probably, they probably were busier in other years. We did have other events going on in the city at the time, including a band concert at the island, and like I said, a myriad of fireworks complaints. So the police department paid particular attention to the group at the island. We have not developed, and nor are we comfortable yet, developing a plan to cite, arrest, or detain people who are not complying with social distancing. That's just one of those things that is something that I, and it's, it's up to me, but also up to the law enforcement, it's just not, one of those things I'm uncomfortable with as far as law enforcement intrusion into people's lives. We tend to believe that responsible adults need to be responsible for their activities, and that while we're honored about they follow the social distancing guidelines, the masks, things of that nature. Like I mentioned, this particular incident was a small part of the whole day, was a small part of all the activities, a small part of the area, physical area that's covered in our city regarding recreation. The police department monitored the event, it was a relatively calm, civilized gathering. Law enforcement tends to resort to arrests and or citations if, as a control mechanism, if it is out of hand. The information that I received Saturday when this was occurring was that the group, although large, and not particularly social distancing. although large, and not particularly social distancing, was not unruly, was actually polite and respectful of the officers. So they used their discretion, which I support, in not becoming a strong arm or taking any further enforcement action. It really wasn't any necessary to control the group. The focus was made on this particular group by or via social media. In my opinion, received a lot more attention than the other areas of the city that were calm, that were no problem. And I think if you looked at that picture, if you looked just to the right a little bit or to the left a little bit, everything was very well taken care of. So it was a little out of alignment there, or a little... I don't know if it was deceitful or what it was deceiving. And so I was informed later on in the day that the group was dispersing later in the evening. Just for the record, they were not exactly on McCarty's Cove, they were down a little bit further towards where the volleyball courts were. So as they left, I was informed that they were picking up after themselves, and the trash situation was nowhere near what it had been in the past. If you recall, 2018 was the year when we first had our big party down there related to the fireworks. They left a lot of trash. A citizens group formed afterwards to help us clean it up at that time. And since that time, the trash has been... It's not perfect, but it's not perfect on any day. However, they were picking up after themselves and again moved off the beach. The next day, that same group that has been picking up trash under what I believe to be a public service, because that's how they would describe themselves in years past, we sent people, staff, crew down there to assist and haul away the garbage that was collected as a cooperative effort with them. So it was something that we were planning on and was handled relatively easy. I don't know if I need to say anymore, but that's from our point of view, the incident at the beach was a well-maintained and well-disciplined group, and it really didn't involve any more police involvement than what we had. Two additional points. If we, for example, closed the beaches, I think we have to close them all. I don't think you can just close one section of the beach. If we don't close them all, they're just going to go somewhere else. They probably would go to somewhere else anyway. And I don't think it's fair of the rest of the community who are enjoying the beaches to close the beach because of this group. I think if the police department would have pushed them off the beach in an enforcement action, it would have resulted in an unpopular event, and I'm sure it would have been on social media and probably criticized the same way that it was handled if we didn't do anything. Not that that affected how they were doing or what they were doing, but I think that that mechanism wouldn't have been as... Would have been just as bad or worse. And under that scenario, if you push them off that beach, they're going to go somewhere else. They're going to go to another beach, or they're going to go to another part of the city, or whatever. We're just moving the problem around. So I think in the long run, what we did was necessary, proper, under the circumstances. I realize that COVID-19 is a mitigating factor, but I'll just finish by saying that we've been doing this roller coaster ride with COVID for the past 12, 14 weeks, and every week is different. Everything changes from week to week, or at least in two-week intervals, and we try to adapt and flow with it to the best of our ability, taking into account the desires, needs, and wishes of the community as well as the commission. Sometimes it's difficult to be perfect at that game. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's my... Commissioner Stonehouse, go for it.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of thoughts, really, or a couple of observations on July 4th. I went down and looked at South Park, and that was fine. I went down to Lamrose, looked at that, and that was okay too. Looked at Lighthouse Park Beach, and that was fine. The only place that really was having trouble was McCarty's. And in talking with people who had been there all day, they gave a report back to me that was very similar to what the city manager just said. That it was a group of people who worked at the center, a little bit to the north, but everybody else was just enjoying themselves on a wonderful summer day. And I think there's many actions we can take, but certainly closing the beaches, to me, would never be one of those that I would consider. Because you also have the same problem going on to a lesser degree up at Morelandi, Little Presque Isle, those beaches too. And from talking to folks that were up there, they were somewhat problematical and so. But the beaches really serve as an outlet. It's a beautiful summer day. We had just come out of, what, 12 weeks of lockup. People are anxious to get out. We don't have the food festival going on at Matson Park, which would have taken some people there naturally during the days, so that relief mechanism was not available. And it got a little bit together at McCarty's. Disappointing, disappointing in a lot of ways, because the one thing that I thought we had done very well in Marquette, not only on the commission's side, every meeting beating on people on the importance of social distance, wearing the mask, washing your hands, et cetera, all of these things that we have to do. The same message being beat home by WWE, you see the television station every day, both the Channel 10 and Channel 5 doing the same thing, the mining terminal doing the same thing, the governor doing the same thing. Every news media in the state is pushing on this as an absolute thing that you have to do. And what happens is we'll get some crowded people down at the beach and just ignore it. And that becomes... You just really get, I think, very angry with that. I would ask folks to think a little bit ahead, not from the tourist side, because we certainly are getting tourists in town, but what happens when Northern comes back? And we have 6,000 students, all of which are coming from someplace other than Marquette County. So how do we deal with that? How do we have the same issues with potential CB-19 problems? Maybe that's a bit of coordination with county health, a bit of coordination with Northern, I don't know, but certainly those things that we can look at. Immediately, though, I would ask to suggest that we need to think about Labor Day. Because Labor Day will be the traditional end of the summer, depending on how that falls, that has the potential to be something like we had with July 4th. So we need to think, what if we did well on July 4th? What can we do better? How can we help mitigate the problem? Because clearly, the problem is not going to go away. I'm very heartened to hear, though, that we didn't have the same trash that we had last year and had the year before. And one of the things we need to think about, too, is social media. Because certainly, all day on Saturday and into Sunday, we were getting message after message after message about what happened at McCarty's Cove. And some of the messages were using pictures that weren't even of McCarty's Cove. And some of the postings were using postings of piles of garbage that weren't even... This year, two years ago. So what I'm asking the public to think of is that when you look at something on social media, you really got to look at it. And you really got to make sure that what you're seeing is truthful and honest, because the potential for fake news out there is very, very real. And the potential for people just to pile on and say whatever the person said before, then make it bigger, make it better, and put another posting on, and that becomes trolling, and now you've got a firestorm building up that may not be real. So asking folks to look at that and examine it and see those kinds of postings. But I commend the city, I commend the police department for the work that they did, I particularly commend the lifeguards for being there that day, and certainly for all the good folks that came down and helped clean it up. And by the way, if you haven't been to New Year's Eve downtown Marquette and waited until all the crowds left and took a good look at all the garbage that was left. So it's not just an event that occurs when people go to the beach, it occurs any time you have to gather your people. There will be some people within that crowd that feel their job is to garbage the beach or garbage the city, relieve and throw things away. But, Your Honor, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Reverend Stonehouse?
I've gotten more messages about this than I have gotten in my entire time that I have been here, the year and a half, almost two years, come out in two years, the commission. And I think, yes, not everything you see on social media is true. However, I think dismissing these concerns as... I feel like these concerns have been dismissed in our current response. And I do not think that that is appropriate to do in this circumstance under coronavirus. If it had been, you know, any other time, that would have been a perfectly fine gathering, yes, but this is during coronavirus. And it is literally dangerous to our society to have people together within six feet, actively breathing, you know, forcefully on each other for a long period of time. Short period of time seems to be okay, but even then, there are things that happen. And so I hear the comments from the many, many comments we have received, and we, as a community, need to grapple with very directly that things aren't different now. And I... We... And then there are consequences to not behaving appropriately, to the point where we might even have to close businesses that are currently open again. We might have to close businesses again that are currently open. That is the consequence of not following through. And so, once something has started, I understand that it could have been difficult. But why didn't we plan for this? This has happened before, and we could have planned for this. And I'm sure, I absolutely promise you, that we will plan for this for next year, and it will not happen again, not while I'm sitting here. And in that... And certainly by then, we'll be in a different... As the city manager said, it's... We have to almost plan in only two weeks at a time, and that's a lot of two weeks from now. But we have relied on... Our public spaces have minimal management, minimal, because we have cut and cut and cut and cut. I used... My first job at college, or when I was still in college, was actually just to be in a playground and be there. Be there for the kids, be there to, you know, give them Band-Aids, but also like hear about what's going on in their lives. We used to offer services to help the community. So this, to me, also gets into... We need to think about how we're managing our public spaces better. I think we can... And I think there are ways that we can do that. I'm not going to go on much longer. I just... I think that I'm... I'm very concerned that we're going to have some hot weekend... We're going to have hot days, the next three weeks are going to be really hot, and we're going to have gathering on the beach. And so, please, yes, you know, there are respectful ways to say, "Hey, we need to maybe back up a little bit, we continue to talk and hang out, but we need to back up a little bit." But the drinking, the trash, the... And it's not just the photos. The videos are very clear. There were hundreds of people, and they were packed in on each other. I'm not going to... I really... I hear that, I saw it, and we need to address it.
Commissioner Frisher?
A little meeting. We just toured the city, drove around, saw some bad roads, saw some good roads, saw a lot of improvements that you plan to do, which I help everybody out. And I think it's good for the city to keep... You know, we've been noticing too that our city informed us that they want to try and get on top of things before things fall apart, which is a good idea, it's like a car, you want to get stuff fixed before it falls apart. So the city's doing that, they're trying to work on, trying to get stuff fixed for when it gets bad, replacing old sewers, you know, with new stuff, and just... They've talked about just putting Band-Aids on stuff, and we discussed this, we're from our engineers and public people, that putting Band-Aids on stuff is not always the best situation, because you can put a Band-Aid on something, be temporary fix, but then you have to rip up the Band-Aid, take the Band-Aid off, and then fix it with some reed of the Band-Aid, which is not a good idea. So the city's working on the best possible assets for everything and what they can do to fix everything. Happy to see the playground getting done. I guess we're under the board, like Commissioner Snaga was, personnel board, we had this idea many years ago for a new playground at the island, and we worked on that very hard. And group people got together and said, "Make it accessible." We did a lot of research on this, and we worked on it very hard. People are great people, and we worked on it for a long time, it's been probably 10 years, I think it's been going on, but it was really supposed to be a... Excuse me, Presque Isle Park, but then, you know, a lot of people couldn't ask, "What part of Water Park, what part of this, what part of this?" All that stuff is a great idea, but Presque Isle was 10 degrees cooler than everywhere else in town, so that's one thing I said about that stuff. But it was great, and we said, whatever former city people said, "Let's place Matson Park." We had the idea originally as a board. We talked about that, and we said, "Well, we didn't give anything wrong with it, but for our park, so that's just why I do that." And the city informed us, "Well, there's a lot of stuff happening." My daughter was younger at the time, she used to go to that park all the time, and she asked, "Why is this gone? Why is this gone? Why is this gone?" And we were just saying, "By people on the park strike to hurt them." That stuff was outdated and could not be replaced because it was basically against law and not accessible and all that stuff. So happy to see the kids go, be in a place that has to be able to kind of, you know, felt the opposite with me, as people really liked it when they were kids and they don't want to see it go. But the stuff that the board were done, and the new board is working on now with the park strike, we're working on it, it's going to be a beautiful playground, all be accessible, lots of stuff going on, it'd be great for everybody, everybody would enjoy it, and a little bit of everybody. Older people can sit and relax, and biggest thing to play, I heard, you know, about playgrounds is, I researched a lot when I was on the board, was, you know, safety for the kids. First now with the virus, it's a whole different story, but back then, I think people told me, when they're playing on that playground, if they're not watching their kids, a kid could run off and go run to the wall, or go to the beach, or, you know, unless they go a lot of places, probably escape. So I was... When I was under the board, we talked about this playground for years. We said, "Let's make one way in, one way out for safety of the kids," you know, like not a lot of offense, but basically one entrance for everybody, one entrance out. So the parents and caregivers, we feel very safe. You know, if they couldn't see their kid, they know they're safe, you know? So that's one of the cities' point, you know? Sensibility is very important in the city, and the group has evolved, the target of the front is very important to them, but also safety. That's what they're talking about. Looked at everything, make sure it's safe, make sure it's sensible and everything. And after I started back to the beach subject, you know, a lot of that stuff was on social media, but everything, I was busy on the fourth, I didn't go by, I usually go out and vote, but remember, there was like a small portion of the beach that was way packed. I saw the pictures, people reposted pictures, picture and da-da-da. And our city manager and our commissioners, you know, they kind of did their best to pick up, and they were very peaceful and stuff like that. No, it wasn't very smart to do, but, you know, we can't close the beaches because one people were one bad area, you know? It's like closing a public road because people speak too much on a public road. You know, you can't close roads because people speak, they just have to realize and behave and do better stuff. I mean, for Marquette City, there's a little bit of beach Marquette City, I mean, there's all the new beach out towards the island, there's a little beach at the island, there's McCarty's Cove, all the Pickett Rocks, there's South Beach, there's Beach Out on 128, there's lots and lots of beach for everybody to go to. So I guess what you're looking at is, hopefully people realize now what's going on, probably next, we'll come to our next city meeting about it, but just be safe. And if you look to an area that's packed like that, just leave. If you don't feel safe, leave. Probably not good for people to do that, because hopefully people be safe, but the city cannot tell people what to do. tell people what to do because, you know, with signs and parking, if you put up the sign saying no parking, people parked there anyway. Put the sign saying no smoking, people smoked there anyway. So there's no, there's no sign or, nothing you can do to stop people doing, you know, some people love doing the opposite, whatever signs is. Put a garbage can out there, people put their garbage by the garbage can, you know, there's all kinds of stuff out there, you know, and so hopefully like people said, when the citizens get back, hopefully things will be better and be able to realize, well, better plans, give them, have everything good.
Commissioner Bob Hill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a very serious issue. I think it's very important for us to be having this discussion. Like Mary Proton Hill, I've also never received this many emails, phone calls, social media contacts about any single issue since I took office last year. I think that what happened at McCarty's Cove on the Fourth of July was completely unacceptable. I believe that perhaps it could have been handled more effectively by the city. And I also strongly believe those in attendance should have displayed much more responsibility and respect for their neighbors than they did. From everything I've seen, you know, I know that a lot of people have said that trash wasn't that bad and, and certainly it wasn't as bad as in 2018, but, you know, I have heard from a lot of volunteers who were cleaning up afterwards, and there were many bags of garbage left on the beach. I also think it was unfair to our lifeguards and certainly very dangerous for those in attendance to be having a large crowd of often heavily intoxicated people in the water at one time. But above all, I think that we can hopefully all agree that having hundreds of people, many of whom were not wearing masks, crammed into a narrow 50 to 100 yard stretch of beach was an unacceptable threat to public health when we're in the middle of a global pandemic and a resurgence in COVID-19 cases, not only on a national level, but also here in Michigan and right here in Marquette County. At this point, we know that some of the people who were at this beach party have tested positive for COVID-19. I imagine that there may be more in the coming days and weeks, and we have already seen in Marquette County in the week before the Fourth of July, a 28% increase in COVID-19 cases. The UP was recently redesignated by the state of Michigan as a medium risk region, up from a low risk region. You know, also, as many people have noted, this event went viral on social media, but not just here in Marquette or in the UP. I mean, I had a friend from Indiana tell me that he saw something on Twitter about this. And so I do not think that that's the kind of image that we want to be projecting to the world at this time. I know everyone involved is trying their best, but I do think that we need to do better next time. I also want to urge all Marquette residents, as I did at our previous meeting before the Fourth, to please, please wear masks whenever and wherever you go in public. And yeah, even here at city commission meetings, I think we're trying, everybody in this room is trying to set an example. I would urge everyone to please avoid large gatherings like what you placed on Saturday, even if they're outdoors. And if you're feeling sick, please get tested, self-quarantine. It's so important that we're able to trace contacts in lieu of the spread of the virus. At the end of the day, this isn't about politics. A lot of people want to make it about politics, it's not. It's not about age or generations, it's not about personal opinions or assigning blame, pointing fingers, it's about keeping the most vulnerable members of our community safe. It's about helping our local businesses and the thousands of employees and patrons who they serve to get through this and survive. It's about making sure that our children and the thousands of university students who call Marquette home can go back to school in the fall. It's above all about basic human respect and decency. Certainly the city could have done more, in my view, to prevent what happened at McCarty's Cove, and I hope that we will do more in the future. I don't have all the answers. I think that proactive enforcement of city ordinances and statewide executive orders would be appropriate. Perhaps with regards to trash, we could increase the amount of trash receptacles along the lake shore, which there really aren't that many, that's something, an idea I've heard from several city residents. But ultimately, I think Marquette's success in facing this COVID-19 crisis down and preventing incidents like this from happening in the future is going to depend far more on the choices that we all make and that the people watching this meeting make than what we do as city commissioners. So I think we all need to take collective responsibility. Aside from that, I just want to thank my colleagues and city staff for some really productive discussions today about our pension plans and public infrastructure. This is really the bread and butter of what we do as local, like the officials and as the city government, so I'm looking forward to continuing these conversations as we move forward and finding some creative solutions to some pretty difficult problems.
Commissioner Sligo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm trying to find a way to kick this dog in a different direction, but it's kind of impossible, I think, with everything that's been said already. But I, I have to say that when I got back in town from spending time with my family in a social distancing space, which was what we intended to do, and we, we started getting bombarded with the information, whether it's social media or friends that were texting and sending emails already, letters that were calling out commissioners for not being able to control the crowd down there, how we, how we couldn't have been prepared for this, and how our city did not respond properly. I got really, really ticked off. And of course I got defensive because, you know, I don't like being attacked for, for things that, that at the time I didn't think was part of my responsibility. So, working through it and answering letters and communications with our, our neighbors, and thank you for letting me wait this long to cool down a little bit about this topic, but the fact is, is there's always going to be that group of people that does not go along with what is right. And for those people, the social distancing idea of that group was unpopular, they were uneducated, whatever it might be, I don't think that they grasp the regional impact that their ridiculous acts during the Fourth of July are going to impale on our community. Whether it's a business that can't, you know, has to be shut down again because they can't have, in sort of seating for restaurants, whether it's our, our friends that we're not able to see again because our social distancing has gone from being able to, you know, maybe staying in the same yard again, but now we have to, to go and hunker down and, and social distance almost completely in a, in a single family unit instead of being able to be with friends. Or if you're looking at the impact that it's going to have on our kids, you know, we, look at our seniors, whether you're talking college or you're talking at high school, look at the kids that miss summer camp, look at all of the repercussions that have come with COVID. And pull your heads out and start to be responsible adults, okay? If you can't do it, then go somewhere else, get out of our town, we don't need you here messing up what we've tried so hard to, to, to combat. There's no doubt in my mind that people make choices and they got to be held accountable for their actions, plain and simple. I would have loved to hear that we gave out 100 tickets for MIPs, for opening talks, for public drunkenness, for all of these things that these knuckleheads were doing down there on the beach that day. And I get the approach that the, the city took and that our police department took to make it as civil as possible. They did police it, they were through there. I felt bad for them being in that situation, to be in front of all those people that, who knows? And we know that people are, there's more stories that are going to come out of it, that people on the beach that day got the phone call that they were positive and they still didn't leave, you know? And it's, and I'm not saying that now because it's not fact, because that's a fact. Somebody on the beach that day got notified and they didn't leave and that's how they felt about their fellow human beings or fellow human beings around them? I mean, that's just, come on, that's just disrespectful. Again, accountability. I'm not going to beat it any harder than, than what we've already done as far as this drum, but, you know, in the future, this is not going to happen again. You're right, Jen, and I'm with you, the rest of the commissioners, this will not happen again. We're going to have a plan and I'm going to make sure that we sit down in the future with, whether it's the city manager, the Marquette Police Department, Parks and Rec, I don't know if Northern should be involved, whatever it is, maybe the county, because we had, we should have a universal beach approach for this. You know, how do we approach this if it happens? How do we get this under control? Because for three years, we, we, we really kind of let it go and it shouldn't have been let go in my opinion. I appreciate everybody that was working on the situation, whether you were a police officer or a lifeguard, one of the volunteers picking up the trash. Thank you so much for, for taking care of our community because, you know, I wasn't here to be a part of that and I can't thank you enough for that. So that's, that's what I got to say about McCarty's and that scab that you've left on our, our beach for all of our responsible people, for a lot of the community and other areas, it's just knock it off, stay home. Another small area of concern for me, I'd like to just address some parking issues. The parking at Prescott, I think, has gotten a lot better this year, and I thank the parks, the park patrol, and I thank Marquette City Police for patrolling that. I've seen a number of tickets on windshields, unfortunately, because people somehow thinks, think that don't park here means everybody but you, but that's not the case, so please keep up the policing on that. On the contrary, we talked about social distancing and we want to spread things out. I've gotten a concern, citizens along South Lake Shore that are, they're wondering why they're trying to spread out and find their own piece of beach on these hot days, and they're parked in an area that is not inhibiting traffic, but it's between the road and the, and the bike path, they're off the road far enough, there isn't, I don't think, and I have to go down and verify this, so please forgive me if I'm wrong, very effective parking signage down there, and maybe there is, and I apologize if there is, but I'll go down and keep that in mind if I have to. But I think that there's got to be some areas that we sit there and go, okay, we're going to let this social distancing pan out a little bit further and let, be a little bit more forgiving perhaps in, in an area or two. So, I did want to bring that up because that was a couple of calls that I received when the, when people were saying, I wish you wouldn't take, ticket these people, and I actually let them park in my driveway. So, something to think about. Sorry to be so long-winded, I know that we've got a lot to say about this and we've got a lot to learn, and we've got to come up with a plan, we've got to come up with a plan for this now, because it's not going to happen anymore and, and these guys, if it does, then they got to know ahead of time. You step on that beach, you do these things in an area, in a fashion that we do not agree with, number one, you're getting this, a warning, number two, you're getting this, a ticket, whatever it might be, you got to have something in line and we got to preach it like we, like we've preached the fireworks ordinance, and because that, albeit not perfect, has gotten a lot better because of education. So let's just stick to our guns, settle down, me and myself included, and, and we got to work through this and we'll be a better community for it in the long run. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a good time to thank our volunteers, not only those that cleaned up after the Fourth of July, but those that, whether you're a group or an individual, those that clean our beaches and our cities every day, and it's a great service that you're providing for us. I too am very deeply disappointed that this group would be as considerate enough to put our community and the communities that they return to at such a high risk. I recognize that this issue is a beach issue, but it's also more than a beach issue, it's a crowd issue, crowd gatherings, and it's about house parties and crowded bars that we have in town, and it's about our residents that leave our region and don't isolate when they return home, because we've had those too. So, you know, the COVID is not, there's no simple solution to this, and I think we need to strike a balance between too much governance and individual choice, but I think we're hearing about it, and we all want to find a solution, as difficult it is, as it is. I support continuing to coordinate with other municipalities as, as our city already has, and as my gandhali pointed out, restricting one area easily just moves the issue to another area. And we need to rely on our expertise of our public health officials to guide our decisions. COVID isn't going away and we may have to make some difficult choices in our community. And I guess I need to say that everybody needs to help model behavior, and if we could only develop the cultural norm in our community, it's kind of like Commissioner Shlegel said, but it's just not in our community, take it somewhere else, that we wear our masks, that we do social distance, and every one of us need to be that part. Part of it also is a messaging that we give, our businesses give to those people that are coming into our area, that they too should be isolating and not crowd gathering. So, yeah, not in our community, let's get this done so we can open our schools as well. After that, I just want to say that I recognize that budgeting is going to be especially difficult this year as our city's experiencing significant income decline due to the COVID, being a COVID year, and I want to thank the city staff who I know that work that they're currently doing to provide us a balanced budget while retaining their essential services. And the community needs to recognize it, but will need to stall some of the plans that we would really like to have moved forward. And finally, for those that live in Shiloh Hills and need to deal with those streets, I think every one of our commissioners recognizes how difficult those streets are, that and Division Street, and we wish we could do more, we'll try to do more, and as we move forward, we'll be keeping those streets in mind. Thank you.
So first let me say to city staff, thank you for the work session tonight on the capital improvements plan. I'm sorry that this COVID beach situation has taken over the good work that you have done. You've spent a lot of time putting this together and we're spending far more time talking about this McCarty's Cove beach situation than we have on the budget. Millions and millions of dollars and we're talking about the same event, very important event, but I feel for city staff, I know you've done a lot of work, we appreciate you, and I think it goes to show that we trust what you're doing, we have a lot of confidence in the, the information you present to us, that, you know, we're not sitting here picking apart everything that you've said. So thank you for putting together such a nice plan. Moving on to the McCarty's Cove beach situation from Fourth of July. So first of all, I have a hard time envisioning any time in my mind that I would ever want the beaches to be closed. It just, there is, if it's managed correctly, there's room for people to be distanced at the beach. It's one of the perfect activities for social distancing. We've got a great community here to be able to do that and to get people outside even in the most dire of circumstances back in, you know, March and April when this all started and you couldn't, you know, even be close to anyone outside of your household, but you could still go walk down to the beach and look at the lake and just kind of chill out for a minute. So, I, I know things can always change, but I, I've had people, many, many people ask me to close the beaches and I just don't see how that could work. How do you enforce a beach closure? That's, it just seems bizarre to me that we would do that. I, I do think that there is a lot we can do. I have been trying to get the word out and I would appreciate anyone listening to help me get the word out, I know commissioners have been doing it, about wearing masks, normalizing mask wearing. We could be wearing masks for two or more years. Just say with that for a second, literally, we could be wearing masks for a very long time. Get some that you like, get them comfortable, put them in your car, at your workplace, everywhere. I don't think they're going away anytime soon. I hope I'm wrong, I hope you can be like, Jenna Smith, you were wrong. Fine, I don't mind being wrong, but I don't think I'm going to be wrong. Get used to the mask idea, get used to being six feet apart, and gather in small groups. I think that's the most reasonable thing, you know, someone's backyard, at the beach with, you know, five to 10 friends. I, I get it when you're young and you want to party and it's the Fourth of July and you've been cooped up for months, that you want to be with all your friends, close together at the beach, but it's just not right. And I think we've all pounded that fact, I'm not going to go into it. I, I do think there's a lot of individual responsibility. I mean, I would agree with some commissioners, I do think we need some kind of a plan moving forward. I would like to see this event no longer happen on the Fourth of July at our beach. Looking at the chief, police chief. But I know that's difficult to manage, so we will keep that conversation going. It's, it's a tricky balance because I, I personally cannot see how we would write a ticket for, you know, lack of social distancing, but, but maybe there's some gray area there that we can figure out, like we've mentioned, potential for MIPs, open intoxication, but it sounds like the crowd was pretty manageable. It's a very tough issue. I'm going conversation, I appreciate the thoughts from the commission, city manager, I really appreciate the police department and the work that they've done. I really appreciate the police department and the work that they've done, the Parks Department, everyone who's put in on this one, it's, it's a tough issue. Lastly, I did want to mention that COVID cases are on the rise in our community and in our region. Our region, which is Region Eight in the state of Michigan, is now in the medium risk category as of today. We were in the low risk category as of yesterday. And you can go to mistartmap.info to see a map that displays that. So, with that, we are in stage five with the governor's My Safe Start Plan right now. But I would anticipate that at some point we will start to move in more of the phase four direction, which could include closing the bars, restaurants back to takeout only. I'm not sure, I mean, it could be a while before we hit those markers or I'm not sure exactly how the governor will do it. But I just want folks to be aware that we're moving in the wrong direction. And we've got to try to get band together and, and get through this. That's where I'm at for today. City manager, do you have any additional things to add?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Well, we are adjourned at 7:56 PM. Thank you all.
Yeah, you say, wow.